Now called to order the May 21st, 2018 meeting of New Canine Middle School District Board of Trustees. At 6 o'clock, I recommend that the board is present with all members in attendance. The vows and dedication to be given by Mr. Turner remain standing for the pledge of allegiance and honor of Texas flag and be read by Mr. Turner.
Please bow. During the following, we thank you for this glorious day you've given us. It's wonderful. We ask that you keep our hand over as we go through this evening. And we just can't thank you enough for our students, our faculty, and the wonderful facilities that you've blessed us with. We ask that you bring everybody home safe tonight, and the decisions we make tonight will glorify you in all we do. Jeez, you're pregnant.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which sustains all our nations, and our God, who is the Father, and who is the Son, and who is the God of the earth, and of all the heavens. Our honor to the great Father, our God, who has blessed us with all our blessings, and who has taught us how to live, and who has made us what we are today. Our praise extends to the heavens, to the earth, and to the Lord God. Our worship extends to the heavens, to the earth, and to the Lord God. Our worship extends to the heavens, to the earth, and to the Lord God. Our worship extends to the heavens, to the earth, and to the Lord God.
Out of two of the agenda's recognitions, we'll start on Mr. Lachey over on the energy conservation contest winners.
Hello. Okay, with the two students from Knottwood, they're our teacher and principal come up in New Canine Middle School, principal also, Mr. Holm. While they're coming up, let me tell you a little bit about what we've got here. These students participated in an energy conservation poster contest, and were the esteemed winners picked by Clear Result in Entergy, Texas. We're presenting them with a framed piece of artwork, as well as a trophy thanking them for their commitment to raising awareness for energy conservation. So let me get these straightened out. Mr. Holm, would you accept this for this team, too? Okay, on behalf of the energy conservation department, I just want to say thank you to the students and staff that participated in the contest. These students' artwork has been framed and has been posted. The two elementaries were so good that they couldn't decide between the two, so copies of both of them printed and scattered to every elementary, just to raise the awareness. And the national tour has been sent to all the secondary schools, just to remind people to save a little bit of energy while we're doing all our normal day-to-day things. So I just want to say thank you to everybody, to Genesis and Anthony and Ms. Kentu.
Good evening, my name is Scott Powers. I'm the executive director of public relations for New Canine ISD. This is a special meeting each year because we recognize the many students who qualify for state competition at Porter High School and New Canine High School. This year, we have some 32 groups, hundreds of students have qualified to compete in competitions, academics, athletics, and other extracurriculars, and so we will recognize those students tonight. What will happen is the students will be presented by their sponsors. They'll come out, the board will greet them, and we're going to send them out that way through those doors and take a photograph, as long as the rain holds off on the field out that way. If you are the parent or a student, we invite you to stay at the board meeting, but if you don't want to do that, you can either go out that way and then exit through the stadium gates and get back to the parking lot you parked in, or of course, you can meet up with your students out here, either way. And with that, I will bring on our first presenter, Pat Barrett, someone who worked for Fine Arts.
Good evening, I'm presenting today on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Woodard, who have to leave town on short notice. I'm going to first present the orchestra students from Porter High School who qualified for state solo ensemble contest and will be competing in Austin this weekend. Dahlia Carver. Kelly Phillipson. Brandon Dalmedia. Sorry, I have to turn that. Cody Massey.
Hello, good evening, I'm Brian Best, the Porter High School Director of Bands. The Porter High School band had a pretty astonishing year in terms of success. This year, we placed in five different state bands. Tonight, I'd like to highlight two of those events that we call the band's achievements. This year, the Porter High School marching band earned a Division One rating, which qualified for an area marching contest. There, they earned a top spot to compete in the finals round, where they placed fourth out of 26 bands for the first time since 1991. The Porter High School band competed at the UIL State Marching Championships at the Alamo Dome in San Antonio, and there, they placed in the top 10% of all 257 5A schools in the state of Texas. Ladies and gentlemen, these are your representatives of the UIL State qualifying Porter High School Spark Marching Band. And I have one more student to recognize. One band student earned the achievement of Texas Music Educators Association All-State Musician, Grayden Harrison is the first freshman to earn the title of All-State Musician since 1990, and is the third All-State Musician in the Porter High School band this year. High school band students selected to perform in the All-State Concerts have competed through auditions to qualify at the state level. Allstate is the highest honor a Texas music student can achieve in the state of Texas. Only the top 2.5% of all student musicians who initially auditioned become All-State Musician. Ladies and gentlemen, this is this year's All-State Musician, Grayden Harrison.
You may actually have a few slip-through coming in next round from the band. These are the students qualified for Allstate Solo Ensemble, which will be competing this weekend for choir. Jacob Cates. I'll give you your certificate, okay? I'm sorry. Alexis Delway. Preston Sharp. I'll brief you into the third pack room. Kimberly Nenney. Yeah, we all come up. Diane Mire. She's coming back around. See you on the night. And Christopheria. Thank you. This is Dahlia.
Good afternoon, Porter High School art would like to recognize Annika Buscara for advancing in state to race. And Gracie Edwards for winning congressional art competition in Washington DC. Her artwork will hang at the Capitol. State qualifiers for the Texas Association of Future Educators, Andrea Aljera. Erica Cholo. Stephanie Arario. Michael Asfithia. Adriana Bowden. Stephanie Contreras. And national qualifiers who are educator rising in Brooks, Carolina. And Sharlyn Neesling. One more district, it was Angel Otten.
Hi, I'm Melanie Turner, and I am representing SCCLA Fashion Design. My first student that placed third in recycle and redesign is Megan Kelly. And then placing second place in interior design is Jayden Sosada.
Good evening, myself, George Dabney and Autumn Dabney, worthy sponsors of Skills USA Engineering from Porter High School. And tonight, we would like to celebrate and recognize those students who advanced to state competition. We have, first up, Maria Rusier. She advanced in mobile robotics technology. James Brand. He advanced in, too, electronics technology and technical drafting technology. First up this night, Steven Zoll. He is advanced in automated manufacturing technology, and he won first place in district and advanced to state for technical drafting. He's also going to A and M.
Good evening, I'm Heidi with Skills USA from the Medical School USA. Several students are now getting to go to state level for competition. First, I'm Melanie Hager. Emily Casares. Daniela Escobedo. Joel Estrada. Ashley Fernandez. Diana Martinez. Juanice Martinez. Paula Folesquaga. Erica Palomo. Batima Salazar. And Brenda Soto.
Good evening, I'm Matt Buthby with Skills USA from Porter High School, chapter 4049, criminal justice. Christina Best. Karina Mendoza. Joanna Romano. Kimberly Mendez. Paula Folesquaga. Batima Salazar. They're also medical, so they play, you didn't see them. I don't think they deal with it, but they're fast. Emily. Brittany McGowan. Stephanie Zuniga. Douglas Miller. Jacob Wilson. Patrick Price. Saad Moreno. McKenna Eccles. Carla Silva. Romain Garza. Olivia Alexander. And Adriana. Kelly Saran. Olivia Salgado. And Lizette Cora. And also the national president for Skills USA.
Hello, my name is Rayanna Payton. I'm with Porter High School, Hosa, and I'm going to call out the names of the students that made it to our state competition this year. Matty Bryant. Victoria Rivera. Melanie Anderson. Brenda Soko. Daniela Escobedo. And Erica Palomo. Batima Salazar. And Brenda Soto.
Good evening, I'm Matt Buthby with Skills USA from Porter High School, chapter 4049, criminal justice. Christina Best. Karina Mendoza. Joanna Romano. Kimberly Mendez. Paula Folesquaga. Batima Salazar. They're also medical, so they play, you didn't see them. I don't think they deal with it, but they're fast. Emily. Brittany McGowan. Ripley McGowan. Stephanie Zuniga. Douglas Miller. Jacob Wilson. Patrick Price. Saad Moreno. McKenna Eccles. Carla Silva. Romain Garza. Olivia Alexander. And Adriana. Kelly Saran. Olivia Salgado. And Lizette Cora. And also the national president for Skills USA.
Hello, my name is Rayanna Payton. I'm with Porter High School, Hosa, and I'm going to call out the names of the students that made it to our state competition this year. Matty Bryant. Victoria Rivera. Melanie Anderson. Brenda Soko. Daniela Escobedo. And Erica Palomo. Batima Salazar. And Brenda Soto.
Good evening, I'm Matt Buthby with Skills USA from Porter High School, chapter 4049, criminal justice. Christina Best. Karina Mendoza. Joanna Romano. Kimberly Mendez. Paula Folesquaga. Batima Salazar. They're also medical, so they play, you didn't see them. I don't think they deal with it, but they're fast. Emily. Brittany McGowan. Ripley McGowan. Stephanie Zuniga. Douglas Miller. Jacob Wilson. Patrick Price. Saad Moreno. McKenna Eccles. Carla Silva. Romain Garza. Olivia Alexander. Olivia Alexander. Olivia Salgado. And Lizette Cora. And also the national president for Skills USA.
Hello, my name is Rayanna Payton. I'm with Porter High School, Hosa, and I'm going to call out the names of the students that made it to our state competition this year. Matty Bryant. Victoria Rivera. Melanie Anderson. Brenda Soko. Daniela Escobedo. And Erica Palomo. Batima Salazar. And Brenda Soto.
Good evening, I'm Matt Buthby with Skills USA from Porter High School, chapter 4049, criminal justice. Christina Best. Karina Mendoza. Joanna Romano. Kimberly Mendez. Paula Folesquaga. Batima Salazar. They're also medical, so they play, you didn't see them. I don't think they deal with it, but they're fast. Emily. Brittany McGowan. Ripley McGowan. Stephanie Zuniga. Douglas Miller. Jacob Wilson. Patrick Price. Saad Moreno. McKenna Eccles. Carla Silva. Romain Garza. Olivia Alexander. And Lizette Cora. And also the national president for Skills USA.
Hello, my name is Rayanna Payton. I'm with Porter High School, Hosa, and I'm going to call out the names of the students that made it to our state competition this year. Matty Bryant. Victoria Rivera. Melanie Anderson. Brenda Soko. Daniela Escobedo. And Erica Palomo. Batima Salazar. And Brenda Soto. And that is all that we have today. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Ann Christian, I'm in New Canine ISD Building Trades. This year, we have three guys who go to state competition, TSA, one placed, and we've got two state bands, so we're very proud of them. First is Caesar Pena. Come on, Pena. Good evening, you might be having a good year. He took Best in State for a beautiful white oak chair, so check it out on our YouTube and New Canine ISD website page, go Best in State. Two, Arigas, went to state this year for a 3B chessboard, it was beautiful and placed at state, we're proud of him. Last is Omar Rubio, who had four years in her program. He took second in state last year, and he went back and trumped it, taking Best in State at TSA this year, very proud.
Good evening, I'm Shuri Henny, representing one of three of SCCLA's sponsors. Our first team placed Portland State for parliamentary procedure. First up is Santi Albizar. Ms. Billy Lindsay. Ms. Stephanie Salazar. Ms. Laura Lorenz. And Ms. Megan Havill. Our second team that I instructed was a sports nutrition team. They were two of our youngest members of SCCLA this year, they're freshmen, which is very hot for us. Ms. Guadalupe Sanchez. Carmen Roga, and they placed sixth in state. Good evening, I'm Stephanie Porstow, I'm an education and training teacher at New Canine High School. We have one student compete with SCCLA for the education program. Shuri Albizar, she competed in her illustrated pop, she placed second at the regional level in state.
Hello, I'm Omar Johnson, I'm a teacher in the arts at New Canine High School. I had several groups competing at region this night, and this is Vanessa Vasquez, she competed in cupcake fall, and she placed second in region, and went to state. Was in a team with two other girls, and they competed in culinary competition, and they had a six-minute, full menu on tablecloth burgers, and they placed second. There were the other team that did the same thing, and they placed fifth in region, and they went to state, and that was, they lost it. In fact, I'm so grateful, I'm like, oh, they put lots and lots of time, and...
Diana Martinez. And Carson Rush.
Good evening, I'm Todd McDonald, the swimming coach at Porter High School. This year we had five qualifiers from the state and all finished in the finals, which is not automatically an early actual qualifier. So, well, maybe I wasn't in there. First we have Nolan Rivers. Next we have four girls that made it in the 4x100 freestyle relay and finished 15th in the state overall. First is Jenna Van Loon. Anna Sanchez de Tuckley. One of the only people this year to actually say her name correctly. Derek Batino. And Brittany McGowan. Thank you.
Hi everyone, my name is Sarah Hesse and I'm the girls' head track coach for Porter High School. We today are acknowledging Jane Stewart, she went to state for shot put and she got fourth place with a throw of forty feet, two inches.
Good evening, I'm Coach Bell and I'm filling in for Coach Google tonight for the powerlifting department. To be proudly recognized Madison Chapman, who placed second at the regional meet and also competed at the state level, she took place.
Good evening, I'm Charlie Hopkins from Shady High School, I'm working technology. I'd like to thank the board for recognizing all these gentlemen and women for everything they've done and everything else, I really appreciate it. Sort of Motorcycle Service Technology, Jose Gomez. State champion and national contender in Louisville, Kentucky, June 23rd through July 1st is Paul Partner. Motorcycle Service Technology Matthew Brill. Diesel Service Technology Dalton Winn. And Motorcycle Service Technology Jeff Valente.
I'm Jackie McElhene, I'm the debate coach at New Caney High School. And this year I had two of these hardworking people who dedicated their labor to the task of the past and they played state in a lot of their offices.
Good evening, I'm Deidre O'Neil and I'm announcing for Jessica Edwards, who is the sponsor of the Colonel Justice Club, she cannot be here tonight. These students competed in the Texas Public Services Association Youth and Government and Law of the United Nations competitions this past year and advanced to the state competitions. Serena Kenton. Quinton Aoké. Catherine Wardfield. Reese Castor. Paige Rollins. Diane Chris, I'm used to her. Ryan Sawyer. McKenna Oliver. And Jeffrey Valente.
Hello everybody, I'm Cynthia Holman from New Caney High School, Cosmetology. And we are so excited because this is our first year in our brand new lab. You're gonna come check it out. Anyways, we had a lot of girls that made it to state and we just got off the bus competing. We came in third place in a hair show, which was really exciting. So excuse the way that we look, some of us have like a little bit of blue in our hair. So here they are, Yolanda Hip Hill, she came in fourth in customer service. Diana Rodriguez. She also earned a college health license this year. Christina Escobedo, also earned a college health license. Kenya Casanova. Came in seventh in the state. Iris Trejo, seventh in the state. Diana Sagano. Kayla Lander-Birdy came in fifth in the state. Dulce Mejia, fourth in the state. Kelsey Locano. Also paid college health license. Sarahi Chalo. And that is all that we have today, thank you so much.
Good evening everyone, I'm Ann Christian, I'm in the Canadian National Building Trades. This year we have three guys who go to state competitions, TSA, one placed, and we've got two state champions, so very proud of them. First is Cesar Pena. Come on, Cesar. Lovely evening, you guys have been a great year. He took best in state for a beautiful white oak chair, so check it out on our YouTube and the Canadian High School website page, go best in state. Two Rodriguez, went to state this year for a 3D chessboard, it was beautiful and placed at state, I'm proud of them. Last is Omar Rubio, who had four years in her program, he took second in state last year and he went back and trumped it, taking best in state TSA this year, very proud of
Good evening, I'm Shari Henny, representing one of three of CCLA's sponsors. Our first team placed fourth in state for parliamentary procedure. First up is Santi Almazar. Ms. Billy Lindsay. Ms. Stephanie Salazar. Ms. Laura Lorenz. And Ms. Megan Havill. Our second team that I instructed was a sports nutrition team, they were two of our youngest members of CCLA this year, they're freshmen, which is very hot for us. Ms. Guadalupe Sanchez. Carmen Roga, and they placed sixth in the state.
Good evening, I'm Stephanie Porstow, I'm an education and training teacher at New Caney High School. We had one student compete with CCLA's Department of Education, we're glad. Suri Almazar, she competed in her illustrated pop, she placed second at the regional level in the state.
Hello, I'm Laura Johnson, I teach elementary arts at New Caney High School. I had several groups competing at region this night, and this is Vanessa Vasquez, she competed in cupcake fall, and she placed second in region and went to state. Was in a team with three, uh, two other girls, and they competed in culinary competition, and they had sixty minutes to do a full menu on tablecloth burgers, and they placed second. There were the other team that did the same thing, and they placed fifth in region, they went to state, and now they lost it. In fact, I'm so grateful to all my girls, they put lots and lots of time in their production of food, and they worked hard, early in Washington, Washington.
I'm representing the Technologies Movement Association, we want to name the next place in the state of Texas, media producers. So we, the first one is Mr. Cory Campbell. Tahiz Esel Pérez. My little girl, Skadi Narsea Posta. And Dabilla Williver. Thank you very much for your support.
Hello, thank you for having us, Amanda Fraser, she's our only New Caney High School student to make it to state, served as our class president.
Evening, I'm Deidre O'Neil and I'm the Doyle Teacher of Operations Coach. And I'm very honored and proud to introduce my student, who has won sixth place, two times in row, last two years, that's studying with your operations, Trace Lutz and Laxton.
Good evening, I'm Melissa Adams, the choir director at New Caney High School. We have twelve students who advanced to the Texas State Solo Ensemble Contest, which will take place on Memorial Day this year. And I have six of those students I would like to recognize this evening. Alberto Aguilaro. Shelby Owen. Abigail Garcia. Samantha Carrero. Melanie Guzman. Nina Mendoza. Storni Samba.
Good evening, my name is Joel Penner, I represent New Caney Decker. These students I'm about to introduce to you have done exceptionally well, one of them has been here for the last, well, it's actually his first year, but he's a senior, which I would have had before, he's done exceptionally well, and the rest of them are very young, I'm glad to have them all back because they're very exceptional kids. I'd like to introduce you, Andrew Boyd. Mallory King. Luke Meyer. Zane Moore. Ishmael Robson. Kylie Robertson. Sarah Sebary. And Ashley Wilford.
I'm Jim Beck. The Lord has me as a blessing, so it's going to be a constant blessing. It's really been a blessing to be here all these years with you guys. The students here are really fabulous, and this year they've done an outstanding job. New Caney High School Journalism and Technology have been to state many times, and if you go back and look at them, that's a metal count for the past decade or so, we have them all in the top three schools in the state. Our kids win a lot of awards, and they're proud kids. A lot of it has to do with the facility that you're in. A lot of students get to study about video production and this type of stuff, but here are the kids that actually do it, and that's tremendous. The school board would have enough insight, and Mr. Franklin would be wise enough to do things like that. Our students, and I don't want to take a lot of time, but I just wanted to tell you, our students have gone up to really pretty big positions. In Los Angeles, in Hollywood, we even have a kid working. If you go to the One Star College and watch their recruiting video, you'll see one of our students, who they consider one of their big, big, big guys, who, you know, has come out of New Caney and that college as well. And this year, I think these students are probably going to do great things also. When I say to them, as students here, I think it would be nice to honor the parents also that are responsible for putting together very, very gifted kids. Kayla Laxton. George Sawyer. And Cory Campbell. This guy has only a song, but I don't think you can find a kid in the state that can edit like him, it's incredible. The, we won first, I didn't even tell you guys, we actually, we were, we won first this year in two different events. One was the onsite video competition at the University of Texas. Cory did most of the editing, and I think only a song, he does incredible work. And he's in incredible work, he's awesome. Thank you very much.
Hello, Representative New Caney Move On Dance Team Nancy Toledo attended the All State Texas Education Association, she's an All State dancer. We are very proud of her hard work for the organization, the high school, and her dance team. It's Nancy Toledo.
The following New Caney High School band students have qualified for the state's Solo Ensemble Contest, which will take place one week from today at the University of Texas in Austin. Following, Brianna Aiken has based on a French horn trio, a Rex Quin tet. George Dopador, a clarinet quartet, and clarinet choir. Jonathan Arquito, a trombone solo, a trombone quartet. Healed Callahan, percussion ensemble. Matheo Flores, on a saxophone quartet. Danielle Rivera, a trumpet trio. Anna Hernandez, on a flute trio. Arturo Hernandez, on a clarinet quartet. Juan Hernandez, on a clarinet quartet, and clarinet choir. Jesse Hill, on a trumpet trio. Devon Isaac, on saxophone quartet. Jacob Prory, on a Rex Quin tet. Daniel Lander-Birdy, on a clarinet choir. Delcy Locano, on saxophone quartet. George Marine, on trombone quartet. Monica Morales, on a clarinet choir. Al Burkins, on trombone quartet. Kylie Robertson, on a French horn trio. Ivan Rubio, on a clarinet choir. Evan Ruby, on a trumpet trio. Gabrielle Sandoval, on trombone trio. Giovanni Satvamya, is in two different trumpet trios. Madison Satskary, on a flute trio. Carter Silas, on a Rex Quin tet. Alexis Silva, on a clarinet trio. Adrian Stanley, on a flute trio. Andrew Strebe, on a trombone quartet. Desmond Velazuelo, on a trombone trio. Chloe Villarreal, Martinez, on a trombone trio. Chris Willahan, on a Rex Quin tet. And Robbie Young, on a Rex Quin tet. We look forward to having all of our students perform well next public event.
Hi, I'm Amy Carlson, and I'm the cheerleader sponsor of New Caney High School. We had twenty-nine participants at the state club meet here. First up is Troy Garber. And then his partner, Kyler Carlson. Hannah Holland. And Guadalupe Sanchez, with part of a web site crew. And then Lucy Velkets. Yvonne Gonzalez made all the finals. Lander Holland, with part of a website crew. And we have Ashley Lindsay. Then her partner, Kristen Laboue. And then your chair coordinator, Boyd Sensata. Individual paper with Frank Scott. And then our big exhibit was Inso Barcia. Michelle Chavez. Genesis Gudman. And Kaitlyn Harris, Scare.
Hello, I'm Sarah Shepherd, I coach traffic at New Caney High School. I had two kids qualify for state this year, Terrence Torada. Eight hundred people qualified in the 100 hurdles and is in the top six states, Texas. Estasia Campbell. Estasia has got a long list accolades, I can't, I don't have time to tell you all, but I do want to tell you and thank our board for letting us go. We went to New York to the National New Balance Track and Field Indoors, and she's the new champion. She vaulted thirteen foot, sixteen and a quarter inches. She broke the five A conference record this past, two weeks ago at state, and won the five A championship in pole vaulting. She also won the Texas Relay and set a vaulting record there, and vaulted fourteen foot. The state, she's a senior this year, and she's gonna continue her athletics, she's been a boss.
Out of priority, agenda's consideration of out-of-state field trip for Porter High School, CTE, Mr. Strickland.
Lost two batteries.
Alright, good evening, guys. I was looking to say, the team's recorded by any round, but I don't have anything like their students. Porter High School, CTE Engineering, competed at state, and each student's qualified for nationals. They are requesting permission to go to national competition in Atlanta, Georgia, June 22nd through the 26th. Our sponsor, Autumn and Georgetown, will take them and give them a chance.
Is there a motion to approve out-of-state field trip for Porter High School, CTE Engineering? Is there a motion to approve, say aye? I suppose, motion's approved. Good luck. Out of priority, agenda's consideration of out-of-state field trip for Porter High School, Mark. Sean Rose.
Hello, as you heard earlier, Gracie Rivers is a accomplishment Brady's district eight winner, and her artwork is hanging in Washington DC Capitol Building, and we're requesting consideration for she and a sponsor to attend Washington DC, the reception, and the date of that is June 26th. She's on the website, she's amazing.
Is there any questions? Is there a motion to approve out-of-state field trip for Porter High School, Mark? Is there a motion to approve, say aye? Motion is approved. Out of priority, agenda's consideration of out-of-state field trip for Porter High School, Best Buddies, Mr. Smith.
Good evening. My name is Jared Smith, I'm a special education teacher and best buddy of the advisor at Porter High School. You've already shaken hands with a good number of our chapter members and officers, Best Buddies is a nonprofit organization of volunteers and students dedicated to creating opportunities for one-on-one friendships between students with intellectual and available disabilities and other students at their school. We're asking for a consideration of sending our incoming chapter president and advisor to the Best Buddies Leadership Conference, which is held every year in July at Indiana University.
Any may have any questions? Is there a motion to approve out-of-state field trip for Porter High School, Best Buddies? Is there a motion to approve, say aye? I suppose, motion's approved. Out of priority, agenda's consideration of out-of-state field trip for New Caney High School, Cosmetology, Mr. Strickland.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dex.
On behalf of Cynthia Holland, college health teacher at New Caney High School, there requests permission for an out-of-state trip in January 2019. But this will be a student-funded trip for a cosmetology class at New Caney High School.
Is there any questions? Is there a motion to approve out-of-state field trip for New Caney High School, Cosmetology?
Agreed.
Is there a second, I'll say aye? I suppose, motion's approved.
Thank you. Good luck.
Out of priority, agenda's open forum, the board will now hear comments from those persons that signed up to speak. We have Ms. Otters, is that correct?
Yes.
Otters, I apologize. We gotta read a quick disclaimer before you get started. Board encourages comments from citizens of the district or employees. Anyone wishing to speak either as a member or as a representative of the group may do so at this time. Board asks that comments pertaining to public education issues and be no longer than five minutes. Remember, the board may not Remember, the board may not discuss any issues that are not posted on our agenda. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the board will defer discussion to the appropriate time during this meeting. In addition, the board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure and the lowest administrative level of prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. Policies are available on the district website, newcaninhighschool.com. And you will have five minutes.
I'll be brief. I'm Sandra Otters, I'm the outgoing president of the Porter Band Booster Program. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you all, the board, the administrators, Mr. Franklin, our school administration for all of the support and help that you've given us this year. Our kids have worked tremendously hard, they've achieved things that are outstanding, and we didn't think we would make it here. And I look forward to seeing what Mr. Best and the program does in the future. And again, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Out of matter on agenda's closed meeting, the board will now meet a closed meeting under authority of Texas Government Code Section 551.074 for purposes of personnel matters, Government Code 551.071 for attorney consultation, and Government Code 551.072 for deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Any action as a result of closed session discussion will take place after the board reconvenes an open meeting. Time is 7:51. Board ends closed meeting at 8:26 PM and will now reconvene to open session. Out of 9 on agenda's reports and closes of board members. I have long enough to speak. Out of 10 on agenda's consent count, a consideration of minutes, consideration financial reports, consideration personnel reports, and consideration personnel reports. Do they have any questions on the consent count? Is there a motion approved out of consent count?
Subnude.
Motion's been moved, say aye on this, say aye. I suppose, motion's approved. Out of 11 on agenda's consideration of interlocal agreement with Ulster College, Ms. Meredith.
Good evening. I'd like to bring that presentation of an amendment to the interlocal agreement, which should be the MOU between Ulster College and Infinity Earth College High School. The highlights of the amendment include, we currently have a cap of 100 students in each freshman class because of the great things going on in Infinity. We would like to bump that to 125, which is the max that is allowed by the TDA blueprint for colleges, so asking for that. Also asking to amend the language to permit admission of external transfer students, meaning our full-time employees that have kids currently in eighth grade, we would be able to consider those children of full-time employees for admission directly to college. Still be subject to all of our transfer policies, look at discipline, attendance, academic standing, but it would allow us the option to consider.
And we can't do that now?
We have been doing it. Somehow when we submitted this year's ILA, that language changed. And so the current ILA that we're under this school year would not allow us, we don't feel like, it's just a little gray the way it's written.
We're just trying to...
So we're just trying to calm it down, really. We have been in those situations, yes. And then the third thing, just little tweaks that our attorney suggested, just in language, I think. I mean, that's right, surely those two things, moving the cap from 100 to 125, and then making sure that we can consider the transfer students.
Is the consideration of the transfer students, are we at our cap every year at 100?
No.
Okay, so I wouldn't want to exclude one of our taxpaying citizens.
We agree. We had talked about putting language in there, that we would give them preferential treatment, but the attorney advised against that kind of wording, but I know that that would certainly be the case.
How many cases do we have, certain preferential?
I think we handed out, it's still 122, it was 122. Right now, we always expect some, you know, drawballs in the summer, some mind-changing.
123.
123, right now.
Well, we have additional personnel with the adding of additional students, or we just incorporate?
We're adding one, one FTE, one teacher, and we think that will take care of it. Any other questions?
Is there a motion approved, the interlocal agreement at Ulster College?
Subnude.
Say aye on this, say aye. I suppose, motion's approved. Out of 12 on agenda's consideration of expedited foreign exchange student waiver.
Alright, just a fancy way of saying, asking for your permission to apply for a waiver with TDA, to cap the number of foreign exchange students at our high schools, the two principal high schools, to five per year. We've honestly currently been doing that. We didn't realize that it needed a waiver. So, that was pointed out by a company that recruits foreign exchange students. So, we would ask that we take care of that the right way, and put that language in all surrounding districts, have that waiver, and it's in place, to make sure that our district kids get the resources they need and...
So without the waiver, we could have 15 to 20.
There are companies that, you know, that's their living, and they, we just wouldn't want to get in a position where they have a company that wants to bring in 25 or 30, and they aren't really district residents, and so this kind of prevents that from happening, just taking care of, you know, the ones that, of course, live here. And five seems to be just sufficient number for that.
Do we get additional funding for them?
Funding people? Just regular?
Regular ADA?
Just regular.
Let's say we get a bunch of regular ones.
Five curriculums.
Maybe we don't get their tax dollars, excuse me.
Get their ADA, we don't have their taxes paid. Ulster, I think.
Yeah, we'll get that here. Any other questions? Is there a motion approved, the expedited foreign exchange student waiver?
Subnude.
All these papers, say aye.
Aye.
I suppose, motion's approved.
It's good for three years too, excuse me, if they approve it, it's good for three school years, so it'll be in place for years.
Out of 13 on agenda's consideration of resolution to consider alternative graduation requirements for students who enter grade nine before 2011, 2012, and have not performed satisfactory on the Texas Assessment Knowledge Skills or Texas Assessment Academic Skills Policy EIF.
So this happened on May 3rd, Senate bill was passed from the last legislative session that, thank goodness, has allowed just the district to have some leeway. These are kids that met all graduation requirements, passed all their courses. These kids are 21, but some, I think, we have one that's 26 years old, still coming back to us every year to turn to pass a test, or even a TOSS test. Just over and over again, missing it. We had one kid miss one test by one question last year. So it's just a handful of kids, but it allows the committee in the district to look at their body of work and their curriculum, and, you know, the fact that they can, anyway, gives us a list of criteria that we can use to basically exempt them from having to continue to sit with that test, which is, of course, not to be given anymore. So, we would ask you, this is a task being, they've already given us the policy and the documents, but it does need to go before the board to make sure that we're okay with that, just to allow us to get these kids graduated.
Any questions? Is there a motion approved, the item on agenda?
The who?
All these papers, say aye. I suppose, motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Out of 13 on agenda's consideration of pre-construction contract for elementary innovations to ICA construction for Bob 2015.
Yes, sir, this is a work to be done at Bench Ranch Storage Mill, Crivin, Valerie and Oakley. Majority is going to be done this summer, some of it maybe having to face the next summer. This includes those playgrounds we've been talking about, I think, I think.
Any questions?
What are the items going to be on table then, next summer?
Yeah.
The one that we've talked about potentially is the parking lot against the range. We're expanding that park into, that way, white oak and bench range can use that parking facility. And so we're going to get the concrete down, pavement, we just don't know if we're going to have the time before school starts to rearrange those parking aisles and things at the current parking lot, or do we go ahead and do away with those? You know, just whatever one can be expedited and give them the most bang for our buck as soon as we're going to do, we just don't know if it's potential for that major project that could happen next summer.
Any questions? Is there a motion to award a construction contract for elementary innovations to ICA construction?
Subnude.
If you want to move to say aye on this, say aye. I suppose, motion is approved. There may be no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 8:36.